Call to order, the agenda and packet are available at the website for the city. Video recording of the meeting can be seen here twenty-four hours after the meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call to the community, this is time for citizens who would like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. Doesn't appear that we have anyone here tonight. We don't have any response from previous. Staff reports, Community and Recreation Services monthly report presented by Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. Your Community and Rec Services report is in your agenda. I'll just briefly review. Aquatics is not active at the moment. They're just maintaining the pool and assisting with special events. Our preschoolers for this holiday season are learning about sharing and caring and busy making gifts for their parents and guardians for the holiday season. They did a food collection drive for Thanksgiving and then they do a sock drive for the Christmas holidays. So they have had a good time gathering that stuff and learning about the meaning of the season. In terms of community services, the Holiday Home Decorating Contest is going on right now. Tomorrow is the last day for residents to submit their entries that are available online through the website. And judging will take place next week with homes being announced on the twentieth. So if you have any questions, input on the website, reach out to red staff. But if you know anyone that has a great home, let them know, please get their entries in by end of day tomorrow. We do have a flag raising ceremony this month. Not the next Friday, the twentieth is the flag raising ceremony for Space Force that'll take place on City Hall Front One at eight fifteen AM. And a joke to special events, Christmas in the Park is coming up this Saturday for those of you that don't know. The event's open from nine AM to three PM. We have about seventy artists and artisans that'll be out there, so the lawn will be nice and full. We've got sponsor tables, children's activities, petting zoo, Santa's workshop where the kids can do make and take crafts, or stage local stage acts, pictures with Santa, and of course the parade at ten AM, so.
Has parade always been on ten?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, you're always lined up. You're there early because you're healthy.
I've never attended a tent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ten AM.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. So we're looking forward to a good time, hopefully you all can make it out with your families. Maybe you have some that are in the parade and some that'll be volunteering, so should be a fun event. The day after on Sunday is our holiday concert on the Wigan Front Lawn. Sandra Bassett and September Soul will be doing singing R and B and also some holiday classics. So they'll sprinkle that in with their stuff and they're a really great band, so hopefully you guys can come see them as well. The gathering picks up in January, that second weekend of January, followed by another concert in Trap Derby. We are busy, so there's something going on pretty much every weekend. So you're bound to find something that you enjoy doing or that your friends and family will. If you want to come out.
I have one more question on the parade.
Yes.
Is there a limit to the number of things that can be in the parade? And I'm asking it for two reasons. A, so it doesn't get too long, and B, we're quickly running out of room in parking lots. You know what I mean, like, does it fill up ever or no?
So we're full, kind of like last year.
Okay.
We're full and it's hard to tell entries with kids.
I know, I know, I know.
We turned away a couple of hopefuls this week because we had already, Thanksgiving is when we usually finalize it, send it out to everybody so that the groups know their lineup numbers. And when we get anybody after that, we have to turn them away.
Yeah.
And we're kind of crammed as it is. Yeah.
Okay.
But that's it for events, that's got a lot of good sports stuff going on too.
So winter season is underway, this week we started practices for basketball and T-ball. We have four hundred and sixty-two kids registered, three hundred and twenty-one in basketball and hundred and forty-one in T-ball. So we're excited to see those numbers again to keep around what we've had in the past. For our T-ball, we first started that last year for the three and four-year-olds and we've got a lot of questions to push last year. And the five and six, so being obviously, you know, lights in the parks and we have a Jack Robinson, kind of just in one division at a time last year, so we need to add five to six this year. And so T-ball filled up pretty quickly, the three, four-year-old filled up and then you have six. Be able to make six teams the first year, five and six this year, kind of excited to see that. So teams are just getting ready to go and out there and then that starts in January. We are still doing the fun run registrations, the neutral park run, ten days registration is open. We have forty-eight so far registered, but that usually picks up and after the start of the new year, it gets closer in February. We are working with Strong Minds to do a winter session for their run classes. Best winter registration is open and Skyhawks is coming back this year, this session they're going to do Santa Ball Hall. And we're offering lacrosse skill classes for this time around instead of field hockey, we'll see if that picks up. And we opened registration yesterday, we already have two kids in lacrosse classes, so hopefully that would be a pretty good thing. So we're excited to try new things and see where the students, but that's pretty much all sports.
Thank you very much, guys. Are there any questions? Public Works monthly report presented by Collins, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner, good to see everybody again. Your report's in your packet, but I'll go over some some of these projects slash parties that are already been completed. The Christmas decorations are complete, so we added additional decorations this year. We added additional photo pots over there in the Memorial Run next to the big globe we have there, which is an additional area for safer area for kids that go across the street into the flagpole area. We also added some more of the ornaments here in front of City Hall, actually we just have a big red one. This year we added two of the small ones. Plant replacement along via Village Parkway, Two in the Field and Desert Rapids complete, despite not making it through the summer unfortunately. So we just completed that actually last week. I do want to know, we did finish this last week and Monday we had a box truck drive through on that subdivision, so we had to redo it. We got it all completed and starting to look good. The healing east-west, and we're going to drive east-west over there just north of the lake where you're going to be working on landscape improvements. Beginning in January, mediums need some attention, going to put it that way, tree shrubs, new gravel will be going in. So we plan on having that addressed by second of the year. I did meet with some pinking contractors to have a local park restroom and rose park restroom repainted. It's in some irony, there's some attention, a lot of graffiti lately, some banal stuff. Unfortunately, somebody has set the amenities on fire in the restrooms again, some dispenser, stuff like that. So what we're going to do is replace these with stainless steel fixtures to avoid the situation in the future. So that that'll probably be done first. I did approve their contracts last week, so I scheduled for the first week. Us department heads, we did a various park tour throughout Phoenix area, we visited Scottsdale, Anthem, Surprise, all those nice, cool-looking parks, just kind of, it's my ideas for the potential Loma Homestead developments, Randy will touch on this a little bit later in this business item. But that was, that was good for us to get around and kind of this might be useful for the future development, so we really enjoyed it, it was a good time. Very sidewalk panels are going to be replaced with both one subdivision, we have a lot of keeping sidewalks through there, so anticipation is mid-January to get this replaced, we're trying to work this into another project. We're not short of concrete, it's a little expensive, so we're going to try to tie this into a smaller project. Other than that, anybody else have any questions? I'm really excited for next year, especially if this is going to move. I'm pretty sure that we've done. I know we have some skyline on the better whole series, of course I don't have the power to them right now. I did get word today from Ethan that they will, they will be powered up tomorrow, so those will be wonderful. The palm tree up lighting, RGB up lighting. I've been, we've been trying to push them to get that done really quick so we can have the torching lights before Christmas, but I don't, I don't think that's going to happen for Christmas, so. But hopefully next year we can add additional decorations to, that's where I have all those working. Are the lights not installed yet? No, the lights are installed, it's just the electrical is not.
So I was going to, you brought it up, but it's not on the agenda, I figured, yes, now that you brought it up. Were you guys debating on put any directions in there, because now you could drive through the Woodfield Square or not drive through the whole thing, drive through partially, right? Were you debating on doing direct decorations in there?
In the medians or on the corners, I don't know.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking, I don't know, maybe the roundabouts, maybe exactly what you said or.
Yeah, so all the roundabouts do have electrical, so there's potential to add, you know, decorations inside the roundabouts, the on top of the heavy walls. There's, there's a ton of potential, when we, when we designed Woodfield Square, I mean, I was very honored about having enough electrical there, so we have enough plugs, things in the future, we want to add, you know, additional Christmas decorations.
But this year is not.
Not, not this year.
Because it's still constructions, so basically, okay. Makes sense. It's beautiful in there. Are there any other questions?
Is there an updated timeline for the another grassy areas open?
I don't know if we're allowed to touch on that.
Yeah.
I think that's bigger than just the public works.
Got it.
If there are no other questions, thank you very much, sir. Approval events, moving on to business, approval events presented by Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, Commissioners, the October tenth, twenty twenty-four minutes are part of your agenda packet. I will entertain a motion either as is or if there are any corrections that you'd like me.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So it'll be. Yard of the quarter, according to discussion of possible action, oh, nevermind. Yard of the quarter nomination presented by Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, Chairman and Commissioners. As you may recall from our October meeting, we had one resident nomination for yard of the quarter for quarter three. And you tasked yourselves with rounding up a few more nominations so that we could have a fair judging of the homes. We did have three commissioners submit nominations, so we do have four nominated homes. Keep in mind, this is technically for quarter three. We are into quarter four, so you guys need to vote on quarter three. The nominated homes are two of seven North Neil and Al, forty-seven of six, North Woodfield, no, forty-eight thirty-four, Green Tree Drive. A deep chairman Taddy, that was you, I do need to know whether that's east or west. You can get back to me on that if you need to, so that we can send everybody to.
My gut tells me east, because it was on this side of, but I'll, I'll check it.
Okay. And then one four two one seven West Valley View Drive is the fourth. And once I have that answer, I can email you guys the Google form and ask that you maybe get that completed by January second so that I have it in time to get that on the agenda for January. So you guys can know the vote and we can shift on to quarter fours.
The focus here was entrance way of the quarter.
Entrance ways for you guys, for the residents that self-nominate, they can, they don't have that information.
Do we do a fourth quarter? I thought we didn't do a fourth quarter for the Christmas.
We, I think we skipped it last year because of that.
If that works for you guys.
Well, this is still.
You guys will vote on this one. And then if you're not doing it because of the holiday home decorating contest.
Was the building one the one that was talking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious, I don't, I don't mean to open up a big jan worms. Looking at entrance way of the quarter, do we need a different rubric? Or is there a different standard, because the, the rubric that we use wouldn't necessarily be a hundred percent applicable for nominating based on entrance way of the quarter.
You guys have not changed the voting rubric? You have just taken into consideration whatever the focus feature is for that quarter? Certainly you can.
Maybe we should gather or somebody should, maybe there's some NAs that need to go in there.
It's got color, it's got.
It's quite amazing.
I know this isn't the right word, there's a fluency too, right, like a coordinated actor. If not, we can figure out a way to make it work.
Yeah.
And the self-nominated home, when you guys looked at it in October, it did kind of also focus on an entryway, so it's kind of was in keeping, I don't think it'll be out of whack with the other nominations. Okay, so no fourth quarter, yard of the quarter.
Let the light, whichever one wins the light one, that would be the.
Yeah, we will share that.
That would be the awarded house.
No, if you didn't, if you guys have been doing it that way all along, it just skipped my brain and so.
No, I do, I do. We, 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 we forego the fourth quarter.
I'll update the website though, because we do have four on there.
I am curious about the lights, though, is there like a rule if you won the last year, maybe you should win this year, or can we just keep going?
We don't, and it's also kind of based on how many nominations we get to. We have people that are nominating themselves in the category.
Understood, I probably asked that same question.
The judges change from year to year, so it's not like the same judges look at the same houses and keep saying, I want the same winner. The judges keep changing.
Understood. Are there any more questions about yard of the quarter? So January second, I'll get you that information you need from me, east or west.
The email's ready to go, the form is ready to go, it's just that east or west.
Understood. Future part at La Loma Homestead presenter Randy Proch.
Yeah, Randy.
Proch, man, planning director. Take your laser.
Thank you Chair, members of RPG, always nice to see John Bush, there's a DRB DNC, OMG. I have a presentation, I have a table exercise, of course I have an icebreaker, I know some more open dialogue. I'm talking about that piece of land up the road on Woodfield that had an old house on. And before we get started on the presentation and what holds in the future, I wanted to ask this question in the five of you here this evening. Six quick questions, and I'll go around and if you have answered right, if you don't have an answer, that's fine. So pressure thanks to my left. What do you call piece of land?
Where the house is, the entire, the entire.
The entire city owned, personal.
Political state. Also the Brainerd estate from way back when. Oh yes, that's right, and then did they cross the street down the little house, wasn't that somebody else?
Yeah, that was Mary's. Brainerd's house got torn down.
Yes, yeah, it got torn down.
Question, same question to you. You're going to need to answer.
Oh, sorry.
Chair.
Probably shouldn't think about it, it should probably just be a quick reaction.
That's correct, because I have five more questions.
Homestead.
Hey. This is what I was. If you have your brothers and you named the library, what would you name the library?
Oh boy, that's, that's a good question.
Okay, right, sure.
What's the name of this library?
That's a good question. Florence Britton.
And would it be wrong, just to Woodfield Family Library, something like that?
I would keep it the same name as the current library.
Yes. What would you name the high school? Or should I say the academy?
You're on a research, right?
Purpose, that's why I have no attachments for it as you mean as well.
The show Performing Arts School, School of, uh, Go Performing Arts in the show.
Okay, right, sure.
La Loma is something with performing arts. Anything's better than that stupid good.
Thank you for your feedback, Chair. Better than a mountain or a ridge or a shadow. Name of the neighborhood.
Uh, Woodfield Performing Arts.
Yeah.
Adams is one we should be on for that one. He's got every school in the state memorized.
All right, next question.
Yes.
The museum. There is a name.
Are we asking what we want it to be called?
What it is. The point of this exercise is just to peel back the curtain, that is, there is absolute consistency for the different amenities on the same location. And we may end up with a hot box situation that ultimately doesn't have a unifying elements ties this land back to. But we'll keep going.
What should be called the, the, you know, what is it called?
Oh, so I know what it's called, but I'm not.
What, what's the question to you?
The question around would be, what would you call, these are all your opinions of the matter.
Like just casual conversation, I'd say someone should.
I would say PW Woodfield.
So this would be that when a home is turned into a museum?
That's, that is currently bill.
I would side with Vice Chair.
Woodfield Historical Museum.
Woodfield Park. And for the summit of the evening. You need one in the park, not one in the park. Woodfield Park is our.
I was on a marketing committee just naming the park at our city center, that was weeks and weeks of.
There is weeks and weeks for answer. It is ultimately a.
Oh, yep.
That's the PW.
I don't know, I, I would have the side. Peacock Park.
There you go, classic. Glenn don't mind having a word with us.
Did you get these questions before?
No, I smacked him there.
But you told me that story.
Throwback to, I guess.
Well, can I, can I intervene?
This is open.
I was the last Wigone Board member to host a social party at Sunset Point.
Oh.
And that was very cool, that was the last one, we were what it done at that point.
Okay.
So that might be something.
Going to Susan fix.
Sunset Park.
Thank you. So as you can see, this is a wide breadth of answers. We've done internal polling, that's conversation with a few others, just as far as what is that unifying element? The high school plans do have a name announced in January. The current name of the museum is the PW Woodfield Historical Center.
Here.
There, there's. Sorry. So we, we have open dialogue with the school, it's starting to get close, starting to get very green. Just want to throw that out there just to get you to think on the same way. What is hot off the presses as of four o'clock this afternoon is a lot of new information that's come to light on history of how we got here. Unbeknownst to, I think, most of the staff, maybe all the staff until rediscovered is in two thousand and three, the city did do a La Loma Homestead plan. It was right after the dedication and, or the donation, I should say, and it was basically the thought of what was to come. This was when, while he was still around, while I went to a few of these meetings that started off. They met over the course of the year. There was a lot of influence uh, from him as far as how that final document came to be, and it was adopted by council in October first, two thousand and three. And then it sat. And sat, and sat. In there, it has very specific information about uh, what was to become and what was not to become, quite frankly. And of course, his biggest thing that was carried forward through all these documents, through donations with CCRs. You know, the acceptance of land was social, cultural, and historical. Three main things that were absolutely essential to the success of that. For the law. What did everybody for their. Or the financial. You can see our own bills. So. After then, it kind of just sat around, uh, those who've been around for a while, John Ray and Chuck Ransom, former staffers here, developed a plan in two thousand and ten. Somewhat advanced that initial goal in two thousand and three, had their own skin on. That goes far as a dollar amount put before in twenty fifteen, but again, it kind of just faded out. So here we are now, nine years removed from the last real efforts to think about that land. And suddenly we have a lot of neighbors. And we have a lot of friends that are coming and enjoying our little piece of land. So that kind of brings you to present day, I'm gonna move some things out of the way, because as the planner, I have all my plans to launch. This. Before you. Well, before we look at today. Yeah. This is yesterday, and this is the final of the time by John and Chuck. Another thing that was lost time. Now, I tell you all this not to tell you your answers are wrong, this is gonna be an open dialogue, this is gonna be electrocuted as far as what we think today makes sense. We're not necessarily bound to what happened in two thousand and three, but it's totally for you. So they had shown garden parks, rose parks, ponds. Fountain, wedding venue. Solar panel, actually, these were all supposed to be solar panels. Of course, they're all hand drawn, drawn by John, I think. Which is. I don't know how you. Probably weren't worried on. Which is right. So. That was my. You look back.
Can I ask a super quick question?
Maybe.
When you, when you plan out the wedding terrace, so would that be a place that it would, like, potentially rent out the wedding party?
That's an idea, certainly. You know.
Source of revenue, right?
Mm-hmm, for sure.
So. Right this yonder, this is the new roundabout. This is the parking lot for the school, and this is already, eight hundred, but it's founded the next day. But it's fairly close to what's going on. This is the performing arts center, so I'm her seat, theater, there'll be their events, our events, and public events. And then the campus itself.
This is Camelback.
This is the.
Camelback.
I know that runs this way.
Yes, but.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant Litchfield, rise is right here.
Yep.
Okay.
Well.
And um, I learned at one of my alma three events that they partnered with Danny Zalisco.
That's correct.
Huge.
Yes.
Give you, Danny Zalisco, he's like the biggest music promoter.
In the state.
In the state.
With school district. Yeah, so the plan is that this will be everyday kind of thing. So, museum. The guest house, the caretakers quarters, the dance room, bathrooms, the pool's gone. Which will end up in my. It's there. This little practice garden, John did a lot of this, not a job, John did a lot of this work as far as adding these paths, these for that concrete, very similar to this sort of condition. Here, it was asphalt. This was all improved by us, so don't think of these as historic for second time. What is second time, it's Julia's garden, Julia's one grandkids. Now, what I have for you. And I think your answers might be similar to that, so. It's everything you could possibly think of. As far as what can and should, or should not go within our land, our land is what's outlined here. Please don't throw anything back at me, these are all just ideas that have been thrown around. Now, the associated parking needs. And these, of course, are all to scale. So if there is an idea that you see that.
What if you're missing one?
I've been, please, I'd love to add.
I think a touchable, clareable sculpture garden would be awesome.
That's the. Uh, Vice Chair, yes, though I.
They can't do that on his paper and like cut up.
Oh, of course I could.
Just kidding.
Really gap of the parking lots, you know, by the library and the, correct?
So they are, we are mandating enough parking for the school and library, are they not?
They are taking care of themselves, they're not taking care of our library.
Do we need to have a parking lot by the homestead?
We need to have.
Where's the, don't we know where the library goes already?
We are, we are close.
Yeah.
I suppose my question is.
Sure.
If I'm going through the park, am I parking at the library, just entering from there, or, or is there a separate park?
Is there, is there part of the conversation?
Multiple.
Okay, so library is here. And this is the, this is the school.
That's the other area, and then this is the here. This is also a part of these. That's true, this is all gonna be have big high fences around it. No, that was conditioned on purpose, so the campus is safe, that's where the dots lines are. This is their bus lane, so that'll be secured, but this is open park on purpose. Now, spending time of day, time of year, weekends, weekends, that will have inflow. And certainly, we will cover ourselves for our parking needs from the later. But what has not been determined is. The rest is.
That's just.
That's the part.
Okay, so when they have any fence. It has to go this way.
Yes, I didn't draw every little detail of theirs, but yes.
It was working out there.
Yes, there'll be a part that's there.
It's not that large.
Always, the entire. That's correct.
Oh, so this whole block.
Yes, it's, it's the, it's the extent of their work and their.
And that's enough parking for the school and the concert.
One of the other things that was conditioned on this is that they can't be both at the same time. Which, would you imagine, if they had seven hundred people filled in the auditorium and the schools and stuff?
Right, that's right.
So it is one or the other, can't be both.
I think so, I thought it was as far as, I think the Ramadas, I would say, it should go here, but I think these Ramadas should go closer to La Loma. Or like say, I wanna take grandma to lunch today, we wanna go on a picnic, we wanna make it close in proximity to, you know.
We could have more than one.
Yeah.
But that, which is elevated. The highest part of this. So.
In the generation. And we need something for kids, little kids.
So one of the things that I wanna make sure everyone hears is, from here to here is forty foot. Absolutely nothing at this time is a. Just something to keep in mind, this is gonna be.
Can you get, is this flat here?
It is absolutely not.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things. You can, on the show, right here, here are the terrace walls, there's a drop.
Okay.
Cut this off, drain, now drain.
Correct. So what? They, they.
What's gonna happen on here, who owns this?
So everything that isn't us is unhoused. And considering how long some help is available in so far, and how much they built so far, we will all be dirt napping before there is anything.
I was saying, like, if we're planning like a Vista.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want it over some of the send it, build on.
So. You're absolutely right, and one of the things I have here. I'm applying again. Are you saying all this has to be on the top?
No.
No.
We can, we should discuss that.
Some items, so, some things like that baseball field would be uh, majority of the land.
Yeah.
And so, again, there's absolutely no flat part of any of this thing.
I, after seeing your email, thank you for putting the ideas in our head that we need to come to the table tonight with thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
And so I thought, what do the others' parks have that we don't? Most of them already have a lake, we have, they have baseball fields, softball fields, we have that, we have soccer, we have all those things. The one thing that our community has asked us about is basketball, pickleball, and dog parks. And I pulled some younger kids this morning, and they brought up skate park. Because Abingdon has one, picture has one, Puyallup has one, Glendale has one, they all have them. But I wouldn't recommend that meaning of this, that is close to this library issue, you know, so that recreation, younger recreation can all be centered around the library, the school, so they get out of school, they can go skate. Basketball. I think it's. Well, that's pretty minimal, in a box. Um, dog park is universal, I think all the community can use dog park, we don't have one, let's say, but true. And of course, the dreaded pickleball. We dress that.
I think this is a good opportunity for pickleball.
But hey, every city has them.
Yeah.
And.
It'd be fun.
Be cool on the hill. So the flatter you make it, the harder it is for the, just as a caution, because. You know, I was there today, I was a little bit far, and we were looking at it, and it's, it's um, like one of three spots in the entire valley that you go to three sixty gear. It gets to that view, you have to, you know, hoof it. Because even from, you know, that museum to here is a good ten, twelve feet of drop.
What are our requirements as far as making an entire park, we need a plant, for example, like, does that mean you can't have hills in the park?
You can certainly have, those are park measure, the idea is that there isn't any amenity that is all, you know, that's certainly accessible. There are certainly some things, like you're not gonna go down the slide, but you should be able to get to the park.
How is that decided, is it a debris pitch, so for example, is there a?
The rise slope is five. Cross slope is five, and the rise slope is twelve.
So one of the things we talked about at first, and I really like the idea, is like a long walking path that would circumnavigate.
Yes.
Um, is that walking path, held to that same standards, or does that walking path have to remain at a five degree pitch though?
Yes.
Oh my god.
The, the other thing we have to keep in mind for any of this is I have to get a park. And they have a maximum eight percent slope. So wherever we put things for people, the truck has to be as well. And that's one of the things, as Kyle alluded to, when we went on our park tour. You can hide a byeline pretty well, which is a very wide symbol, twenty foot lights. You don't know why it's for that. Fire truck.
How do you, maybe this is a, a question that is a thinking question, how do you protect what's there in terms of a three sixty degree view? Sunset, you know, sunset view, sunset terrace, pardon me, how do you protect all of that, but still maintain a five degree? As you walk through?
So to your point, as far as the long way around, it's gonna be a long way around, like, or if you go to the Phoenix Zoo, I can always think of the exact spot next to the elephants, where you try to get kids going like this, that, or switchbacks. It is impossible to think of without the switchbacks. If, there's just no way to terraform it in such a way, you uniformly have less than eight percent fire truck, less than five.
More you flatten it out, the more you lose the integrity of the, for the history, if you will, of.
So, so how can you limit that? Put on there, so you're not violating the integrity of. All the history of the thing. See, that's my thing, like, I don't wanna make it simple, yeah, like, let's try to stick to some of the history, but maybe get a few updated amenities in there, but I think we need to respect why it's there, how it got there, and.
Something like this, it needs to be flat, probably be. Kind of can be.
Could be next one.
Or this one. Those both have to be completely flat surfaces.
So.
This could be different elevation.
Skate park, you can kind of find it, it's what the. So, uh, I think you mentioned the high schools, these are musicians, theater kids, ballet kids, production. All that sort of stuff, and very specialized, you have to uh, yeah, perform and interview, what's the word?
Yeah.
Edition, thank you, I did the words there somewhere, get the vision, you get it. So, you know, there's our sports fields, I don't even know if they're gonna have a school mascot. I don't know what they're sure.
Sure, and I, I respect that insight. But this is for all the citizens of Litchfield to use, not just these kids. Uh, and there's something like that at the moment. Or like this woman.
I think, how do you get here, and the one thing we get here is a pride for this, right, I mean, now welcome.
Well, that was the big, that was the bigger problem with this year.
Yeah, I don't like that.
So you're gonna already have to drive to get to the library.
Isn't there talk about a possible under overpass over Camelback at some?
Point.
These are, and this is all really good conversation, so if you told your families, it's about to say about coming. Because this is that conversation. So, uh, to answer your question, there was originally, and always intended, a underpass. It's no accident that that trail is on, always. Found out, look for space, and it's a fuel line. And when we, uh, said, hey, we wanna dig, they said, uh. The problem with the overpass, they're clearly done, bridge studies is you have to need a D A. Which means it takes you three to four minutes to lock up the ramp, cross and walk down the ramp, or thirty seconds to the box. They'll take the thirty seconds. If you've been on the one, as you approach the bridge, where the fifty one now flies over and becomes Blackout Boulevard, there's a very large pedestrian bridge that separates the neighborhood and that high school, and they have a six foot tall fence that runs down the knee, because kids are still going across.
You know, I, 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 I'm sounding like a really old guy right now. I haven't been around a skate park that didn't smell like weed. Um, the one that was by my high school I worked at in Surprise, opposite, there's a rampant problem with drugs and TV. And one good year, by the dog park, they said, it smelled like weed all the time.
The, when we went on our park tour, we went to Hero's Park, we went to Big Threat. And the library. And there, there was none there, but there was a sign outside the fence line that said, any further vandalism, this is shut.
I, I just, I, I mean, I, skaters are not that people, and it's just, I think it attracts some people who don't take care of it.
Every time I go in your courts to play pickleball, the guys playing basketball, it's the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, that.
So we're the dog park.
Very fine.
So it's for the sound.
Dog. Yeah, that's why I was like a watch out where. And that would be the most noisy part of the loop.
Certainly. Yeah, I was, I was always curious why Chuck and others, I don't dislike the idea of a wedding, but I can just imagine, and now I pronounce you. Just wait for the dead. Pass.
You know, I kind of feel like this is a place of, like, solid reflection, sunsets, and you know, it's, it's a quiet historical place. Like, I don't know that bouncing balls and.
Water.
Skate rail slides, and it's a fine art, so something, there's gonna be some music and.
You know, like a reflection.
Solid reflection, it's a great way to kind of talk through that.
Well, no, you don't have, it's not the hedge, you can do it in the smell.
Oh, Commissioner, just to your point, in this book. All I should write, but there was one period when businesses barred, and it's sunset hour, there may wait, and cell phones may ring. When the sudden hushing of birds' songs announces the twilight and off the terrace, reason that's without its ritual, there is also sunset, there's a fortress. This is from the two thousand.
I remember doing a tour on this fifteen, sixteen years ago. They talked about cocktail hour. I, I'm in Will State and every, every old house here in Old Litchfield has a wet bar. It with either a refrigerator or an ice cream, neither one of them will ever work. But that was true to the era of, you know, to, what bars, cocktail hour at four, five o'clock, that I remember.
You know, this was a place of sunrise services, organ music, you know, from the show, it filled us up.
Well, I mean, looking at all these things, all these ideas, I think this is all too much for.
In some of these things, what, what do we want?
We have that part.
So I will, I, I don't want to steer you too much, because this is your time and this is your. I'll answer your question by telling you that the parking for the library will be containing.
And, but how far is the walk to here? Maybe, is there a way to make an aviation bypass that would niche here without destroying this?
Yes, and we are, and the city is committed to that, and certainly.
Cause as soon as you start putting parking lots up here, you gotta change the grade. But you might be.
You need to get a fire truck up there anyway, right? You need to be able to access.
So we, we checked the box for the school performing arts. We checked the box for a month. The museum is a little tricky. We're trying to check that box now with video. And then it's just a matter of everything else besides that. The goal is to utilize that as a path, it's a possible. Somewhere back here, should there be more parking when there's more things?
But I think. We need to have some sort of playground to find at the library and I've got my kids at the library and you don't want to go home. Maybe we want to walk down here and play at the playground and there's this splash pad and we read our books. You know, it's in, it's on that path, or I just offer that path.
A lot of the new libraries have.
I still like the idea of the story walk. That would be a good thing to have there. And it could depart from the library and end up at a playground or I don't know, you know, or make a loop or something, but I think. To me, that's almost a natural with the library there.
The story park, would it?
Story walk.
Or story walk, walk, would that maybe, you know, go to the, speak to this? The, the history of this?
No, it's literally stories and you read them. I mean, it could be, because they, you change them too. You could tell a story about it, but a lot of times they're actual books that are put out there. And you walk and you read and, yeah, they're in plexiglass.
Change them out.
And you change them out, but why, probably would be responsible for that.
And if it's a, you can't, then there's closer. It's the Iliad and.
If, if this is not developed other than, you know, reflection pond or Ramada, are you going to fill this in with more landscaping?
That's the. And we are obligated for our agreement, we spoke this year to restore vegetation before they go. Gosh, could you imagine? They're putting seventy million dollars into this project and we still have.
Yeah, that's kind of natural.
From Christmas when they have the luminaries and the orchestra and, you know, you partner with the high school to get them up here playing the Ramada pavilions. The bandstand and, you know, it's like a, I think there's a, it's, it's a great.
Is there somewhere, I mean, I know it does sound crazy to do weddings, but is there somewhere maybe on this end of the property that? You guys could develop into a small ceremonial area? I mean, I don't know what that looks like revenue wise.
It's lucrative, quite frankly. I even, like, I went to a wedding in Foreveraway Buckeye, that way past you, way past you. But just a working farm, had an outdoor shed and something like five thousand, ten thousand right now. Yeah, just for the record, the city is a nonprofit, government agency, you know, to make any sort of profit, any proceeds from the sale of said weddings. Events will go back into the maintenance operating.
These are on streets.
That's right.
The landscape park took them up, what they did, three acres of desert, gardens and one, the Japanese French.
So, you know, is this something Andy, you think should be near the library?
Probably closer to the library, I would think. And probably a Ramada near that too.
Splash pads seem like they are. I'm not maintenance nightmares.
Could we have some sort of water feature then?
I'm a huge fan of a water feature. Splash pad, I'm not sure if that's.
The two thousand three plan had illustrated a lap house, I kept thinking it was a pipe.
So there's skinny boards.
And I had to look it up and I was embarrassed to look it up, but once I saw the picture of it, it was just. So, long time ago, Paul and Eve. Paul and Florence had a pool outside. Eve and Wally moved in and put the pool inside. So the idea is that in the two thousand three plan that we had a lap house and a fun. Chuck's plans showed some sort of fountain in that house.
I like the idea of a fountain or a pond or some sort of water or something.
Moving water too, like you can hear it somehow.
Yeah, I would, I think splash. So, we're all on the same page of soccer and baseball.
I think, I say no, I don't think any sports can do. It's not, it's not cheap ball.
Salam reflection.
Dog park?
I say there's a very undesirable piece here, do you want to do it? That's your dog park.
Commissioner, these, these are to seal. It doesn't need to be. Usually you have a small dog, big dog, and then let the grass wait for that. So, I mean, that's a target exactly real best.
Beautiful area that can be a way that. You know, because you have the landscape in England and it's beautiful and people can walk through it.
So it might be a given, but are we all in favor of like a walking path that goes all the way around?
And like some sort of distance where like people, the seating that people.
You see enjoy that. At least four buildings. So the historical society plans to leave space that would include this, they plan to have that same.
So will the house would be gated, I'm assuming, so people can get up to the buildings?
And T V D, I, it would be one of those things that. Whatever programs here might put more people at the museum than people. Going to the other, so that makes sense. You know, one of the things that's being discussed is if there was something that was. A more grandiose landscape or garden or something. That might be the tractor and museum benefits from results. Imagine the museum probably needs a small. And, uh, so, hey, well, there was an early question I wanted to finish. Uh, that's a question, that's fun. We are, we work every day with a historic study because, uh, as of today. This is the parking for the school, for parking for the library. They said, how are we getting? I don't know. Uh, so if there was a consensus here and we're continuing these conversations with so many people and so many groups shredding. If there was something that created more. Because there was a destination, there was things, then there may be a small amount of. But as your city planner, I'll tell you that any intrusion cars here.
You're gonna have to have fire walkways, driveways, and they're gonna be able to deliver material there, and deliveries are different. And you could have, is this steep enough that you would need stairs here, like the stairs go up to them and then you have the ramp that goes along with?
And one of the things, just to finish the thought. Here to here, the old gap is twelve feet. And it's a fire truck, it's twenty. I'm not picking up Julie's garbage. So we're trying, we're trying desperately to avoid any.
I feel like in an ideal situation, I could just park at the library and walk into the park from there.
So long as it's, uh, I mean, the palms are almost gonna be saturated with palms forever. And probably more palms than once every day. Five months, six months, seven years, every year it's just been one month of the year. We're gonna want to see about how to make it desirable.
Not to address specifically that, but I was thinking along all the, if we have this walking path. There should be numerous spots of Ramadas with. Yeah, drinking fountains. Tables.
And it's maybe where you have your water feature, that's maybe right, like where you would be sitting relaxing for a moment. Maybe it is okay for the hot months, perhaps more people would go to a place like this in the morning time or the evening time. As opposed to, you know, in the middle of the day.
If you make it like an exercise type place, like, I don't know how. How long of a walk this would be all the way around.
I think it would be neat for like after dinner, if it's like a mile and a half or less, you know, like an after dinner walk. Especially, you know, if it's sunset, if it's.
So, my, my, now that I see, have we digested all of this, there's not much we could do here, actually. If, if this parking has to be here, that takes up a substantial amount of the land. This is going to be needed, so that's, if that's to scale, that's going to become quite good. And the, um, the height. And restrictions on this doesn't allow anything to really change here. So we're really only talking like the parameter right here. But because this is all elevated, there's not much to do.
As far as court space?
Any kind of space.
Field space, no.
Or could we put sort of a water feature?
To answer your question, the, I mean, that's one of the only areas that is. Or is large, as I said. One of the other things I haven't mentioned is any dirt that they removed is filling this. This is not natural. They created this ravine of salt cedars, in out. And the idea is to create more of a plateau for all of this.
You mentioned exercise, you know, we got rid of all sports.
Have you seen them lately?
I will say this carefully. One of the things we have to really wonder is. Are we creating an attraction for one particular built-in group of folks? How does that really sell as far as the city making such a large investment for a product? So creating something? Just for them or are we trying to create a regional driver?
How much parking, it's like a number of spots, say. I've never seen eighty-two cars.
Yeah, that library couldn't hold.
So do you need two of these spots, I guess, at my point?
Probably, you're not having a wedding since that school is up there.
Well, and there'll be a size limit for the wedding, you can't have a, you know, four hundred person wedding there either.
And this is still elevated here?
Yeah, there's not. The only, the only absolute flat is the two terraces. Not a single piece of this land otherwise. It's hard to tell if there's even, there's drops between these houses.
Based on. What, the folks here would want, they don't want any of this stuff. I, I was at that meeting when we talked about what on the library and they just, they all thought we were just going to ruin. You know, this whole homestead, but I think that's very less intrusive to the property. Is to make that beautiful. Celebration of life events or weddings or, you know, whatever kind of parties they want to have there, right?
Christmas in the park, uh, Christmas.
There's not much more.
Babidah?
Maybe they would shift most of the settings. Oh, yeah. Do the procession. But it was fun thinking about while involved. That's fun for a minute. Thanks for letting us do that.
But I think we have to have attractions for all ages. They don't have to be playgrounds and they don't have to be sports, but I think. I think it still needs to be someplace that you could take a ten-year-old or a three-year-old or an eighty-three-year-old. You know, and enjoy or have something to do.
What would you do?
What would you do? You could go on the story walk and then you could sit in a Ramada.
Oh, yeah.
Have a picnic. I, I really still think there needs to be some piece of simple playground equipment somewhere in there, somewhere in there. Um, but, you know, there aren't a lot of those people who are gonna come over here and walk around the.
Like somebody's.
Yeah, yeah, I just think.
I wrote about putting that close to places.
Okay, so move it back over in that corner over there, yeah, or closer to the library or something, but.
Well, that, I think that's what is. Civil engineering.
Yeah.
There it goes.
But I like the idea of the Ramadas, maybe some picnic tables, you know, on that walking path, so they'll be guns at the horse season. So I think we need, you know, you know, just having built-in Ramadas on the walking path.
Yeah.
Picnic tables, stuff like that.
And a restroom somewhere.
Restroom on the far side.
It's not in the best shape.
Do we think a water feature is a good addition?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Water feature, sorry, water feature pronounced wrong.
Correct.
What, I know that now that I'm good on this committee for as long as I have, that vandalism vandalism is something we wanna try to stay ahead of. Um. Do these things kind of fit into the idea that? So, we're not saying anything here that you're like, oh my gosh, their kids are just gonna destroy that.
No.
Yeah, I didn't know they could light a soap dispenser on fire and so on. I didn't know I wouldn't either.
I, I, I think what it's, what this is gonna tell us, there's presence, there's gonna be presence up there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously, we'll, we'll end up putting, you know, security cameras up there at some point. Um, I think that'll avoid a lot of this vandalism, just activity, constant activity up there. People being in the park, a lot of people watching.
Yeah.
Uh, using.
They get locked off at sundown, so then after sunset, is that?
I don't think you can.
Um, well, if we do do a city park, I would say it would be the same park hours, you know, the six to ten, you know, operationality.
What about bikes? Could I ride my bike? And then do we need bike paths separate?
I didn't even think of that. That's a great idea.
You wanna bike around the hilltop or to the hilltop on the path?
On the path around. I'll just tell you, in Minneapolis, a lady got killed being hit by a bike walking around Lake Harriet and they now have separate paths. Too short. Okay, I just thought people might wanna ride their bikes up there. I don't know.
So is there something, is there no bikes on the path? Or is, you're saying it's too short?
Like two paths. Even, it would have to be local ordinance. Because state law doesn't restrict bicycles on sidewalks. It's up to the cities and whatever.
So I think it's. To restrict that?
I think it works today, like around the lake.
Yeah, we all share sidewalks now.
You can't tell kids they can't ride their bikes in the library, especially.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, this will be a heavy fight.
Yeah, I don't either. I just.
Based on location.
But I just.
Yeah, the hills and stuff now.
Wow. And it's serious, you know, that's sorry, did you turn? Anytime I bring this site up with someone, some, they always have a story regardless of who I'm talking to. Oh, I used to drive by. Oh, I used to go up there, ride my bike.
Yeah.
Yes, all the above. It's everyone's got a storyline and.
Maybe my name peacock.
I can go to the squirrel and she gets them. I got some.
Can you keep them a pen?
Oh, my God.
There was.
They are like the best deterrents. Yes.
No, I know. Get those in when that's the way you bring in the peacocks.
Let me tell you what, nightmare mysterious things ever.
Okay.
We can, we can pin them up, which is keeping the head up.
Sorry, you didn't finish your, you didn't finish your. Top, your what, your points to everybody has a story, and then I think we cut you off.
That's all right. So. I, it's incredible because if you think six months ago, it was a museum.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
Now, why are you on a high school?
Suddenly, Maricopa County Library, just keep putting that out there. Maricopa County Library that wanted to be on our trail, we're like that Maricopa County Library, Maricopa County. And the art free school that's looking for sight. And you wanna talk cultural, historical, you know, just educational. Because one of the things that, and I missed this part earlier, one of the things Wally did not like about the two thousand three plan was this was all just commercial. And he said, please, don't. And like within the, the finance cabinets in the exact same spot that the commercial. So, to think about, you know, especially in high school, the theater that's hopefully a three hundred and sixty-four day theater. A three hundred and sixty-four day live by plus, plus whatever.
Randy, is it, you gotta have a gist of what we all, I think we're all on the same page, right?
Yeah. So what I've written down, sorry, just broadly, playground, some sort, some size.
Cover.
Somebody.
That shade, always shade.
Can I, why are you writing that down? Can I ask? Playground was moved up there. Is there a reason why it can't be closer to the library? Kind of was that mentioned?
I know.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
We don't care.
Spitball.
I don't touch any of them. Just for you guys. Uh, and by shade, what I have consensus from this group that, uh, sale towels probably not.
What? So trees?
I see your funding.
It doesn't, it's, she's not saying a really big playground.
No, I'm not.
Um, and if it's.
The shade.
Contains, you know, not that big. What, what else would you put up on? Like, we, we just did one.
That's towel room.
We just, didn't you just do shade? In.
Canvas. This is Canvas.
Yeah. And I, I, I thought we picked up.
It could be some.
No, that was, that was for Turtle Park and and Bojangles Park.
Okay.
But they haven't been installed yet because of the situation, but yes, those are the.
Yeah. That's all you're talking about.
That's, yeah, I don't know anything else.
You're a mom. Sure, uh, going for it, still for part, it was mentioned really early on, it's.
That was me. I still think it's a great idea. So when you can touch on.
Well, and you have students that are working on it, quite frankly.
And we may have local artists, I don't know. I mean, don't we have that local artist community coming?
So I have, I have some wonderful people today and they talk about a heart wall.
Uh, so, uh, just to, just a tangent with you on that for a quick second. Uh, one of the things that's current, but is already updated, is to make a flat school site, you have to dig out. To dig down, you have to retain earth. The initial plans on my wiki as well that. Was an eighteen-foot wall. From the hilltop to the school. So it'd be one sort of fact. So yeah, there'd be an eighteen-foot tall white wall with a tag. That was a concern. They're doing their darndest to find engineering to go to these max slopes possible, catch rate as they go down. So that these are much. But one of the things, uh, we were joshing with them about, it's the idea that as these folks get to Hollywood, we could do a star walk. In the concrete, they can come back. And it would give us an opportunity to address all people before us, here in the city, with your farm spokes.
Yeah.
Uh, Ramadas, trails, picnic tables, water features, was generally what it. Gardens.
Did you already say gardens?
Cactus garden?
So, I haven't talked about.
There's two gardens. There's Julie's garden, you said, and.
Yes.
Yeah, Julia's.
Or maybe Julia's.
Mechanical office that.
The cactus garden is just off of your package.
Oh, really?
Well, if you have students like I said, that's the school's part.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
So we'll create, we'll create a new one.
Yeah, so the cactus garden would need to be redone. It's, it's not there anymore either, yeah. And then Florence had a rose garden that's not here anymore.
We could probably find somebody. Yeah.
True. Is there anything else I haven't missed?
Do you need rope? Just ask.
Okay. There's a story there, but we'll save it for another time.
Do you have some sort of possible, uh, rental? If there was an opportunity for, for a venue rental, would there be a, like you said, more?
Well, I feel like you're gonna have to landscape anyway. You might as well develop it too.
I would just say as long as it's not generous.
Yeah.
As long as they're little weddings.
Because then it's.
You don't wanna shut down the whole park for it.
Right.
Or it could be just even a space to rent for a family reunion, some sort of gathering.
It doesn't have to, so, hear me out. It doesn't have to be like, this is, you know. Like the Wigone has certain areas that are grassy that the intent is to have a wedding there, but people can still go to that grassy area. It doesn't have to be. So this, this would then be a park.
Right.
Another one of Woodsfield Park's park.
The, the, uh, the reservation might just be for the month.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Yes, so.
And then you, you could hire somebody to coordinate it.
Wedding plan?
The wedding, right? You say no, that's not my department. That's the.
Wedding.
Wait, I mean, the wedding department. Oh, no. I think it's me. Pick the platter for all. I always have to say say fighter in front of my name, because like you do it best. No, I don't do it. Wedding? Is there anything else that this group?
About the story walk?
Well, thank you, I'm sorry. It's in my inbox. I have one in my neighborhood.
It's funny.
I, so I, it's just like.
Oh, a dog park. Oh, pickleball.
It's part of the, it's a part of the process in order, because.
It's my ice cream cone?
Yeah.
Or cheeseburger?
Yeah, we've all, we've all been doing our ideas.
Taking it to the checkout of the purchase store with all the candy around, taking it to Spark.
And it really helps when you have a visual to see what the.
Yeah. It is.
Well, Arche, thank you. I don't know the next time we'll hang out, but.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
You'll be here, I'm right there.
Just as you were talking about, your door closed, nobody touched it.
Yeah.
Some people might say that you can't.
Background from that.
Other people might say.
Bye.
Here we are talking about.
My air conditioning is tied to the same room, the server's room.
Maybe it was the air conditioning or maybe.
Freezing cold.
Thank you very much, sir. Great discussion.
Exciting.
I would say. Little Free Library Program Center, Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Service.
Um, this is just, uh, bringing the topic back to you all. I think that, uh, Commissioner Hulbert asked that we table it. Come back to the table in our next meeting to reintroduce it. Of course, if you have your fill tonight based on this, we could table it again. Or we can report our conversation up to you guys.
I would be in favor of table hands based on rather late discussion.
Now, maybe not here.
I'm pushing the table this time next week.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners. Commissioners report on current events. Chair.
Can't wait for my.
Oh, I am.
Raise your face.
I have nothing to report.
The youngest is out for his last season of, uh, rec sports with basketball. Wow. Uh, I've really enjoyed having the farmer's market, uh, over here by the rec center. It's been, it's small, but it's nice and it seems like drawing a crowd. It's using the, the city looks amazing.
Uh, yeah, Christmas lights, they're great. Um, I've heard numerous people say that they like the colored lights and the bigger trees here. Take that for once. Um. Yeah, and I think the new, uh, Witchfield Square Park looks great. Looks there so far. We've gone and explored it since sliding fences are down. Get the floor to when it's.
Our light trade, lights look great. What an exciting time to be a resident of Witchfield Park. Holy cow. All the stuff that's happening and all the new construction, new parks. Very exciting. And, um, thank you guys very much for all the hard work that you all put into this. Pretty amazing.
I might add something if you could. I have to discuss maybe next one.
Isn't that time again?
Yeah.
I'm excited. There's a lot of new trees that need to be.
Remission some of them to do my trees.
I'll come over, bring some paint. Okay, come on over.
I'm sorry, I can show the vice chair, it's fantastic. It's after any papers on the.
I paint them. Or, or offer and buy.
No.
I'm pretty open to the wine. I don't think we have any topics for a referral to the city other than just our general discussion regarding the homestead. Or I don't, I don't need to call it that.
That's whatever you say.
Alone, the alone. Okay, so that leaves only one waiting for a motion on. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. All those? So, what do you?